Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Well, good evening. It's seven thirty-two and we'll begin this session of the Bridgewater Town Council workshop to discuss certain needs with respect to redistricting. My name is Fred Chase. I'll serve as chair in the absence of our president, Matt Rushton, who is expected to join us later in the evening. And I do have a disclosure statement to read. Pursuant to section twenty of chapter twenty of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-one, an act relative to extending certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency. This meeting of the town council for the town of Bridgewater will be fully remote and accessible to the public through remote participation to the greatest extent possible. There'll be no in-person attendance permitted. Citizens who wish to tune into the meeting may do so via Zoom or Facebook Live. And seeing that we do have a number of members of the public with us this evening, and for any of those members of the public who are not familiar with the workshop format that we're following tonight, we will not be taking action on any measures this evening. The purpose of this meeting is to allow us an opportunity to propose ideas and to arrive at some consensus as to certain issues, in this case regarding redistricting. And any action on these topics will be only undertaken at a duly called and held meeting of the town council. So with that out of the way, we have a somewhat less formal practice for our workshops. But are there any members of the of the council who have any particular opening statement they'd like to make? Yes, Mr. Wood.
Sure. Well, why don't we hop right into it if you in mind? I've got a you know, the discussion, I think, and Jason, correct me if I'm wrong, the discussion here tonight is to try to come to some consensus about what our structure in terms of the the terms for the election should be. Because I think last time we decided on the structure of the districting.
Yeah, that for the most part, that's true. So basically, I had emailed Fred earlier today in addition. I'm not sure that he got it though. It was in the afternoon. I emailed Fred and Matt. I think you all need to start thinking about for the next town council meeting. Obviously not tomorrow, the one thereafter. Changing two dash one in the charter, which talks about the composition, which we have for the most part, we have section A pretty much well established. I can help you amend that. And then the staggering or non-staggering of terms of people and then a transition into this form of district v. at-large. So I envisioned there being a section, an additional section to section ten, which was our old transition part of the charter, and that'd be like ten dot ten, which basically will outline whatever you all think it should look like in terms of district counselors and at-large counselors and who would serve for how long. And then we would fine tune to two dash one that then says, and it's probably going to be saying something similar that, you know, every three years thereafter, after those initial transition phases, it's every three years. But that's that's what I envisioned. I just want you all to start that discussion.
Perfect. So Josh, if you could share the kind of the email that I sent earlier. So what I what I did was, and unfortunately, the when I transitioned over to the email, I lost some of the cable-like structure for the the top one. But let me just run through this real quick and then, you know, we'll get into some ideas. So I went through to the webpage and the the left side of where all the names are to the left side are what we are now, right? So you have an AL stands for at-large. You've got Rushton coming up in twenty-two. At-large at the bottom there, Gallagher coming up in twenty twenty-four. And then, you know, I put down all of our term dates. And then the the new district is, as I looked at the map, I think Fred had done this before. I looked at the map and I kind of identified where everybody would live if they, you know, once we have the new districts in place and kind of identified that. Now, who knows who's going to run? You know, maybe maybe this group of counselors will run again. Maybe there'll be other choices. But I figured we had done the kind of the discussion last time about a district one, two, and three, and we kind of focused on west, central, and east. And if you scroll down just a little bit, Josh. So we had said, you know, district one would come would be composed of precincts one, two, and seven. District two would be five, six, and eight. District three would be three, four, nine. I don't know if we'd named them. We just put them in groups. And when I combined the list above, and you don't have my notes, but I combined the list above and looked where everyone was kind of in their district now. That's where I came up with the concept of, you know, in the West, you've got, you know, some people are coming up for two years. So if we made the term, and this is just the district representation now. If we made the term, you know, two years for district one, one year for district two, and three years for three, of course, we could have, we could change that up. But I figured the way that the current people are running and where they're living, that puts them kind of in the cycle that we they would be in anyway to finish up their their terms. And so we wanted to talk about staggering and just scroll down a little bit more, Josh. So then if we follow that that logic and say, okay, so one year, the district two is in the in the one-year term, then we need to identify, you know, these six at-large positions. And I named above, I put Matt at like AL five and Gallagher is AL four. And Dennis is lucky. He's already in a cycle and doesn't need to run in April. But he would be, if he were running, he would be in the two-year remaining of his of his term. And so I structured it so that, you know, the one year has an at-large, an at-large, and district two. The two-year has district one at-large, and then Dennis, who doesn't need to run. And then the three-year would have district three and two more at-larges. And then, as, as, you know, Attorney Rollins was just saying, you know, the transitional period needs to discuss about that. And then the section on, you know, the the election cycles would need to discuss that these are up every three years after that. And that gets that gets you into stagger in the beginning where you have one, two, and three. And then those naturally cycle through every three years in those in those particular configurations. That was my idea. Anyway, I just wanted to put it on the table.
Right, Fred, if I could.
Yes.
Thank you. Obviously, something like this needs to be done the way that we've we've set it up. For 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 clarification, I have two questions. And maybe Attorney Rollins, I'm sure Attorney Rollins can answer both of them. The the first one is a little selfish. Is it fair to say that I I do not need to run in April, that I'm safe to finish my term because I was elected as at-large last April?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Then you guys are on your own. Just kidding. So so then does everyone, I mean, like Counselor Moore and Counselor Perry also got elected? Is there any scenario where they would not have to run, or would they have to run based on the new districts that are being implemented?
Yeah, I think they'd have to run based on the new districts that are being implemented because the, in theory, conceivably speaking, the only person that would have been able to receive a representative vote that would match the current situation and still be valid is you. Based on your your time period, everyone else would either have to be voted by people that are actually currently in districts other than their own district and would have a right to vote on those people and or the whole town, right? Because there's going to be six at-large and three districts. So, yeah, it would only be you as as far as I can see under any scenario.
But the as far as the charter is concerned, relative to term limits, barring any changes that are coming down the road, does everybody's cycle start again when they get if they're reelected in April, except I wouldn't, I would still be under the
No, no. So I think, and I think what Mr. Wood is put up here, it makes a lot of sense to me. So basically, what would happen, it would it would actually be somewhat similar to the first time we did this. It basically would be just, let's just say hypothetically, you guys use what Bill has put up here. So district two, AL one, and AL two would have one-year terms. And then there, they would all have to run again after that one year. But their next time they ran, it would be for a three-year term, right? So we would do the staggering by way of this transition process. And then it would, it kind of has to start that way. Otherwise, you can't stagger it. It won't stagger right. But it's just kind of the unfortunate way it has to go if you want to stagger people in and out.
I guess, too, just a final question, just a thought is just to be fully democratic. I I think it'd be nice if the if we just pull these out of a hat or let the town clerk pull this out of a hat as far as.
Oh, yeah, I mean, you guys can do.
One year, who runs for the two-year, who runs for the three-year?
You you guys can do it any which way you want. I I think for you, Dennis, because yours actual actually has like a definitive timeframe, I think yours has to fall in whatever that slot is, obviously. So yours, you have two years left, so you you're automatically slotted in that two-year place. But, yeah, however you guys want to do it is.
But I won't. But when nomination papers come out, there'll only be one at-large for two-year term.
Right, right, exactly. Exactly. That's right. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Bill, do you have anything further on the proposed staggering?
No, that's that's it.
Okay. I I think, Bill, if I could just ask you, I I think you've indicated this, but just to confirm. So you your process, as you proposed, it really does try to capture the 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 actual status as is the current case. In other words, the what is the current status for for terms for each of us for reelection? And you're just putting it in the context of under the new redistricting system?
Yeah, I'm trying to fit it as as closely as possible. You know, where people would have one turn, one year left, like like in April, I would have one year left if if it's where a regular cycle. And I think Sean's the same way, right? And so, you know, just trying to just trying to calculate where everyone kind of lives to give them that that same. It's not an advantage or disadvantage, I don't think. It's just like if they already had one year left or two years left, you know, they get an opportunity for that. As I said, we could mix it up. I think that, you know, having the districts on the complete stagger has has to be done so that you get a district rotating every single year. And then it's just a matter of the at-larges after that. So you could you could switch it up and do, you know, make it simple. District one has one year, district two has two years, district three has three years. You know, make it easy. Remember, I just I did it based on who's living where and what cycle they were in currently as listed on the on the webpage.
And I think that makes sense, you know, unless we unless any of us have a strong desire to, for example, as Dennis has indicated, it could be done entirely randomly. So that's, I think that's our choice. Do we try to remain consistent with you know, where we are now in terms of our, you know, council terms as you proposed, or do we choose an entirely random system? So it looks like that's our choice.
Yeah, the at-large is effectively a random choice. It really is just the three districts. And where they get positioned. And Dennis has to be in that second slot because of his election cycle. Other than that, the at-large is really any of us could be any of the at-larges, or none of us could be at any of the at-larges. It's it's really just focused on Dennis in the three districts. And so Dennis and and one of the districts should fall into a two-year pattern. And the other two should fall into either one or three-year pattern. And we could do that randomly, or we could, you know, just name it the way it is.
Okay, all right. Well, on this particular item, unless there's more discussion, that really seems to be our choice. You know, to use the structured format or an entirely random system. So that's what we're confronted with.
So maybe if I could, wait, and this is Eric.
Oh, sure, of course.
Eric, yeah, I'm having some some video trouble. But I I agree with Counselor Wood. While I think the random selection is interesting, I think it potentially puts a district like mine at a disadvantage where you'd have two runs where counselor only has a year in office if it gets pulled the wrong way. So I do like the idea of us at least, you know, who knows the outcome of the election, but I think at least trying to give the counselors the full three years, you know, to to sort of move forward with their commitments and ideas. I think it's aligned with the the term that the voters chose when they first elected people. So I I support Counselor Wood's idea.
Fred, if I could just, I mean, Dennis, like, like, let me ask the question, like, say a district counselor wants to run for at-large. I mean, I mean, they can do that, right? They don't have a district council can run for an at-large council seat without a resignation. When they pull papers, they can just they can pull whoever they want to run for, as long as it's either within their district or an at-large. Right?
As as the town attorney told us, it's only you that's safe.
Yeah, that's right. I agree.
Rest of us go back in the ping pong.
But if I if I wanted to run for, say, an at-large three-year term, I'd have to resign to do that.
Yes.
Yeah.
But yeah, because.
But you guys.
Because you're already spotted.
Right, I'm fine. I'm fine with that. But if if if, like, say, Counselor Moore wants to run for at-large, he can, he can just do that.
Hundred percent. Yes, that's right.
Yeah. It can make that makes sense to me as well. I just think if you then need to find, let's say randomly, district one ended up with a one-year term. You then would need to find someone brand new to run for just a one-year term, which may happen. But I I think that might be less ideal than someone who's on the tail end of a three-year term, putting in an additional year. Might you you might keep the the counselor interested in that role. I guess on the yeah, I guess on the on the flip side, I'm not sure what the random choice would give us that the structured plan doesn't. I don't know if maybe you could could speak to the change in outcome there that we we think we might see.
I I I didn't even notice. I didn't even see it close enough that that's was Bill's intention was to try to keep people's terms within the current timeframe.
No. So Josh, if you can, if you can bring that back up, but just just to the bottom of the email again.
Is we just want to be random just shows that we weren't trying to be biased towards anyone. That's
really. It's it's not because if you, yeah, Josh, can you bring up that email again? It's not Dennis because it doesn't actually fit comfortably. I think it was two and seven. Okay, so Moore and Perry are on the same cycle and they're in in one and two, which is now, I described it as being district three. I'm sorry, as district one. So both of them are in the same cycle. And, you know, that that district, that's why that's why you see under the two-year for district one. So I don't know if both of them will run for the district representation. One of them might run for the at-large, one of them might run for a different at-large, but or might one might not run at all. But that's why district one is sitting under the two-year plan because Perry and Moore were both twenty twenty fours. And needed had two more years on on that their particular term. And so when I looked at that one and so right now, three, three, five, and six are together. And if you have, you have, in the in this case, we said five, six, and eight would be together. So if you put five and six together, then Peter and I are on the same cycle for twenty-three. That's how I picked which which slot would go in. It doesn't mean that the person sitting today in in a district representation would go for the the district rep in that particular slide. It's just a way to organize them. If those, as 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 Eric said, you know, if they've only had one year and they have two years, I tried to organize that way. It's not perfect because it it doesn't fit extremely well, but it was close enough that I thought this would work. The only thing I'm I'm really strong about is that, you know, we have, you know, a balanced election each year, so three spots. And that the districts each other, you know, there's one district up each year because we only have three districts. So, you know, you you you're spreading around the representation around town.
Right, I I agree with that, too. I think we have to have it spread out. But I thank you for that explanation. I I think, given that, I'm probably okay with the random choice or the predefined choice. I'd probably favor the predefined a little bit more, but would support either. Assuming we did stagger it over the three years.
Yeah. So so again, I, you know, I tagged these for the at-large, but eliminate the numbers because there's there's really no numbers within at-large, right? So the only the only randomness that we would pick from, if we didn't think that district two belonged in a one-year slot, would be which one dies belong in the one-year slot, which one, which district belongs in the two-year slot, which district belongs in three-year slot. Dennis has to fall into the two-year slots. You only have one at-large there. But but the at-larges don't actually have numbers. They're just they're just at-larges in in that particular election cycle.
Does um, does anyone else have any a particularly strong opinion one way or the other as to a random or structured arrangement?
I personally, personally, as long as it looks fair and equitable, I I'm I'm fine with it.
Okay. Okay. All right. If that's all that we can do this evening on this particular question, we could move on to there were two other points that Attorney Rollins had urged us to consider tonight. And the first has to do with the section of the of the code. It's section two point one subsections A, B, and C. Composition eligibility term of office. And I think he gave kind of an indication earlier. I think these are fairly straightforward and and relatively innocent changes. If any of you are following along in the in the code, if you want to take a look at them, section two point one. So section A speaks to composition. It just reads, there shall be a town council consisting of nine members, which shall exercise the legislative powers of the town. Here's where we would have to make a change. It currently reads seven. It would need to read three of these members shall be known as district counselors, shall be nominated and elected but elected by and from the voters of the here's the change again, three districts into which the town is divided. And here's a change from two to six. Six of the members to be known as counselors at-large shall be nominated and elected by and from the voters at-large. So in that particular paragraph, there are really only those very straightforward changes that we we all know would have to take place. There's nothing controversial about it. That's just the change that would have the edit that would have to be made. What I don't know, and let me just ask Attorney Rollins this question. Is is there any additional language that you think needs to be inserted at this point with just with respect to the distinctions between precincts and districts?
No, I think we covered that. So the last, I think there's there's a an ordinance that's in rules and procedures. That's a charter change that I think we kind of define it in a more specific way. So that's going to be included obviously as part of this package to go up to the legislature. So that coupled with the new two-one and then maybe a ten-ten, section ten-ten, that talks about what you guys just discussed. I think those things working in concert together kind of clearly define what what we've changed and how we're doing it. So, no, I I think it'll all trickle pretty seamlessly once you all decide on the staggered terms. I really think that's probably the hardest part for you guys at this point is how you do that. And then, you know, obviously, someone proposed some some language on that to me, and and I'll fine tune it for you. And then same with two-one, you know, tho- those are more, I think, almost that they're almost just like typographical changes once we, you know, establish that. So I think you guys are in really good shape once you decide that, frankly. I think I think you're moving in a good good pace. I I think the only other thing I would say is in the transitional period, we probably need to figure out for what election this will start. Because what we did last time with the the last charter change was there was a time it actually technically became effective. So we would probably make this effective on the day of that election so that you guys could all continue to serve and we could have the the council comprised of what it currently is until we have that election. So that would be the only other logistical thing that's, you know, I'm assuming we're we're just going to do this for the next election period, but that that's the only other thing I would think of logistically, because if you read the last charter, we didn't make it effective for a certain amount of time. And that was so that there could be that election, and then it would go into effect at that point, and the selectmen were to continue on until that election happened. So same thing, same same premise. We would just make it effective on the date of that election so that everything worked in concert. And then when everyone was elected, the new charter changes would have been effective that date, and you guys would have been operating under the old charter up until that date where that election occurs. And that's it.
Could I ask just a clarifying question on the language back to the so in the case where we have the at-large counselors, there are probably two ways that we could elect them. One is people run for one of the two positions. So three people run for position one, four people run for position two. Or seven people run and the top two get it. Do we have to define that in the language, or is that defined elsewhere?
No, that's a actually, that's an excellent point. So you guys probably should decide that. Just it'll make it easier. So obviously, if, you know, there you should figure out if we're going to do it in the staggered way that we are, then then clearly there's going to be slots for at-large, one, two, three, four. Obviously, that might not happen in the future, right? But I think, yeah, that that might not be a bad thing to to start, you know, defining and saying, you know, that it's going to be this, these at-large vote-getters are going to be the at-large counselors. Numbers one through whatever, or you just simply do it like like what we're talking about, and that is, you know, you're running for a specific at-large spots, and those at-large spots are defined at least at the initial election by virtue of the fact there's there's different term periods, right? So you you probably should decide that. You should decide what which of those things you want to do. I mean, I think we can do it any which way, but it's not it's not a bad idea to have that well-defined.
Bill?
So would it would it be best to be consistent with the other elections? So like school committee is often, you know, pick two library trustees, you know, pick three, whatever, whatever the item is. This the terms will determine that, you know, there will be how many sections on the first first ballot, there'll be, you know, three different three different sections for representation. And then you would pick two out of the two-year and three, obviously, for district, you're picking a specific name, but for the at-large, you'd be picking, you know, two of whatever number of people run for that particulars slot in the terms.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's I think that's how probably the town clerk would set it up if you guys decided, at least for the first election, you're just going to slot it this specific way. I think that's exactly how it would be. Um, I think that's exactly how it would be set up. You know, you'd have one section that says, pick two for at-large, one and two for one-year terms or however you do it. Yes. I think that's exactly right.
Right. And, and we don't have to include that language in the change we're discussing. That, that's covered.
That's what, what I'm actually saying is it wouldn't hurt to include that if you have some specific ideas about what you want that to look like. Right? If you want it to look that way, then let's have the transitional, um, section be very, very specific. I mean, let's have it say, these are the, this is going to be the district that's going to be up for one year. These are going to be the at-large. The, you know, the ballot is to read as follows. And I mean, it's a transitional clause. So once the transition happens, it's done, right? So we can be as explicit as we want on that because frankly, it's, it's a one-time instruction really. And, and we, as you know, we still have transitional clauses in there. They're just, once they're done, they're done. They're just, they sit there until, you know, the charter gets amended. But, um, I, I don't think it's a bad idea to be explicit if you have ideas about how you want that to look.
So then, if I could, uh, Jason, to kind of key off of what Bill has proposed for the staggering of terms. Yeah, uh, he's, he's indicated which, uh, at-large seats would be, um, um, would be elected for specific terms, one, two or three years. So we could, you know, if that were the case, we could put language that just, that just takes that information and, and spells it out very plainly. Yep. That those are the seats to be, um, uh, to be proposed on the ballot in April. Is that right?
That's right. You, you could say exactly what you want it to say. I mean, you could go to that degree. Um, certainly the, it's within the council's purview to, to create the questions that go on the ballot. Um, if you, if you decide to do it that way, or you do it the, the plain and simple way, which is essentially, you say, we're going to have, you know, District One is up for election for a one-year term. Uh, at-large, one is up for election for a one-year term. And then that people would pull papers based on a specific at-large or a specific district. Um, but that can get complicated for people, right? So I, I think you, thinking about, okay, well, do we say, well, there's going to be two of them that are up for election on one-year terms? Do we just simply say, you can pull paper for the one-year term, which you would do the pick-two kind of that Bill was indicating? You say you can pull papers for the District One or the one-year term at large, or District Two, or the two-year terms at large. Uh, and, and then you, you, on the ballot, it's, you know, you pick two because we need two of the one-year terms. And we need one of the two-year terms and we need two of the three-year terms. So it really just depends on what you guys envision. Um, but there's any which way to do it. I, I don't know how explicit you want to be. But people have to know what they're pulling papers for, right? And I think that's, that's what we probably want to define, that there's going to be two up for one-year terms. Okay. So then you're pulling papers. You can easily ask which, I mean, we might end up having seven people run for the one-year terms and no one run for the three-year terms. I mean, it could be, it could happen that way, but that's, that's what happens. That's, you know, that's what we're doing here. There, there are different terms. And you have to know what you're pulling papers on and for what length that term's going to be. Um, so yeah, I, I think we got to be somewhat explicit about what that looks like, but, um, you know, I'll let you guys decide what you want it to look like.
It actually asked Merrill Lee that question because back in, um, back when we started, you know, this in two thousand and ten. I couldn't remember if we pulled nomination papers and then got assigned the terms and, and, uh, she and the staff found that, no, they, they, they've already figured out which, which terms, uh, which positions we're going to have how many years. Um, prior to pulling the nomination papers. So in the case of the, the districts, you know, we were, we knew ahead of time that, uh, you know, six was for three years and two is for one year, whatever, whatever the sta- the stagger was at that point.
So I feel like we have to know that pro, I mean, for Merrill Lee's sake and for whoever's pulling papers sake, right?
Right, right. But, but as I said at the button, you know, when I laid it out, I was, I was tagging the at-large just to keep it clear in my head. You know, it's at-large two and at-large three, but if they're in the same slot for the term, it's just two at-large positions. It's not, you know, you're not running for at-large four, you're running for at-large with a one-year term or at-large with a two-year term or at-large with a three-year term.
Yep. You can absolutely do it that way. Yep.
Okay. So we do need to put some language together for consideration for two weeks from tomorrow.
Yeah. So whoever, whoever wants to take a crack at it and sponsor either the transition. So there's, the way I look at it is there's, there's really three things. I think one is already kind of pending. That deals with the admin code that we're just going to have to fine tune. I think Mr. Uh, Gallagher maybe had proposed that a while back. There's like a, an amendment to two-one of the admin code. So we just have to fine tune that one. And then, um, in rules and procedures, there might also be an amendment to, to two-one. That's just bare bones. So I think we can start by, uh, in rules and procedures, uh, whoever's going to be at the next rules and procedures, you know, making some motions to amend those things. And I'm happy to work with you guys on, on the language. And then someone has to propose, uh, a ten-dash-ten, um, charter amendment, uh, which deals with the transition and what that should look like. So whoever wants to sponsor that would be awesome. And obviously I can help you, uh, with some of the language if you want. Um, but that, that's what I envisioned. And I think if we change all those things in concert with what you, uh, I think, um, you Fred and Matt were the co-sponsors of the last one that we worked on. I think all of that together will be perfect if the map gets approved by LEDRC, which I don't see any reason it wouldn't. Um, I think we're in really good shape at that point.
So I, I just have one other follow-up.
Yes, Bill?
So, so, uh, section two-one-C, which speaks to, um, you know, beginning on the second Monday. Now, I think, Jason, there was a recommendation from the review committee to change that a- as a starting point. Um, as part of the, the recommendations from the charter review committee. So you talked about the transition period, maybe April twenty-second, but, but there could be a gap between that election and when people can actually sit if this language stays, right?
So yeah, I, I think.
Should we consider trying to adopt that one change as part of this process?
Yes. I don't see, I don't see any reason not to. It's not a, I, at least I, not that I know of. I don't think it's a controversial thing at all. I mean, it's, you guys obviously want people to start as soon as possible, I would assume. So.
Yeah. My concern's always the budget because there's, it's very busy at that point.
Yeah, I know. This, this is going to be an interesting year to, to say the least, but I, I think, you know, especially if, if some of you run again and, and are like, it, it can probably be a fairly seamless process, I hope. But, um, yeah, I think we want to make all of that as clear as possible. Uh, and I think there's this pending charter change anyway, that's been recommended by the charter review committee. Why not, you know, implement that one part? It's, it's pretty benign and it seems to make some sense. So, um, just, yeah, it's a good thought.
How about compensation? Can we throw that into?
Yes. Yeah. You guys can put in like seventy-five thousand with benefits a year if you want.
I'm glad you brought that up, Bill.
But not for Dennis, because he's just a carryover. So he carries over under the zero salary on the next term.
Well, uh, are there any other thoughts on any of the topics we've already covered?
Fred, you know, I mean, the, we should be able to do all this with the April twenty-fourth, whatever the day is election, right? We won't need, we won't need to have a normal election and then have this also, right? This should all be implemented with the April election, right?
That's what I'm, that's what I envision. Yeah. Yeah. I, I mean, I think that's, we don't want to have a special election after the election. So, yeah. I mean, again, we're, we're, we're at the, the whim of the legislature, but I think with the fact that this all has to do with the, the redistricting and re-presincting, maybe it'll move better this time.
You could get, you, you could get a lot of people interested in running for office because when we went from three to five selectmen, we added two selectmen seats and one was up for election. Like this one, and we had, you know, we had, you know, selectmen for one-year terms, selectmen for two-year terms, selectmen for three-year term. I think we had between the three, there were twelve people running. You vote for one for a one-year term, one for a two-year term, one for a three-year term. Again, this is two thousand and two. We had twelve people run for seats.
There was also a little bit, little bit more on the benefit side back then.
Three thousand dollars.
And health insurance.
Three thousand dollars.
And your health insurance.
And then two weeks later was gone.
Is there anything else we need to, um, discuss tonight?
No, I think that, I think is from my perspective, what I had written to you, I think you guys covered everything really well. And I think now it's just a matter of rules and procedures, amending those things that are there, someone drafting a transitional ten-dash-ten. And then I think we just keep this moving. I, I, I think this process has actually moved pretty well. So that's great.
Bill, do you want to put this through? Was it ten-dash-one or whatever it is or?
Yeah, yeah, I'll take, I'll take a shot at that.
I can amend in rules and procedures too.
Yeah, that's good. I, I mean, I, I think, um, Eric, we were planning on doing it Thursday. I haven't heard that that's definitely happening. So, um, whenever the next one is, I'll be available. So I, I can walk you through it too.
Okay. Great. Thanks. I'll check on the date too.
I'd be happy to try to take a, a stab at some of the, uh, transition language. Um, knowing that Jason would be there to bail me out.
We'll see about that. I'm not taking the blame for it. Yeah. Whatever, whatever you guys want to do. I think you all have a good understanding. And I think some of it just kind of works within itself now that you guys got the map done. So I, I think, you know, I think this will work out fine.
Very good. Uh, I would entertain a motion, uh, from anyone. A motion for anything. A motion for adjournment?
Are we, are we done?
Uh, so it, we, it, the floor is yours. If you have anything, uh.
Well, so Bill, what Bill proposed would be the transitional piece, right? Is that what you, right, Bill? Is your?
Well, well, Bill proposed the, the staggering of terms.
Which is, which pretty much is the transition, right?
Right.
Yeah. So you and Bill and Fred can sponsor that piece. Yeah. And the other piece of it is already in rules and procedures. It just needs to, that just needs to get tweaked a little bit. Now, will they have, will there have to be a hearing on these two for the public to chime in or not? No?
No, I don't, I don't think so. Cause this, this state is, I mean, ultimately the charter change has to be approved as a special act. So, no, it just goes through the normal process.
A move to adjourn?
Is there a second? We have a second. Uh, can we, can we do this all in favor?
No, yeah. I do roll call.
Very well. I'll have a roll call vote.
And George, just send that out to everybody now that we've discussed it. The email.
George? I could do that. Can you guys hear me? Okay. Uh, Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Conbotus?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That was six in favor.
Very good. All right. We stand adjourned. Thank you both very much. Have a good night.